All right, we reverse for the invention. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for a nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Rachel Schlesky is here, Kate Canetta here, Gladys Cooper here, Richard Genelli is absent, Pat Johnston here, Redd Cora here, Kevin Matrina absent, Emmanuel Ramirez here, Ralph Giatropessa present, Marley Santos here, Amy Salina here.
Mr. Matrina said he will be here, he was just running late. Okay, recognitions. Westside Middle School STEM students move on a regional level of the Connecticut Invention Convention.
Thank you, Jordan.
I got it.
He sent his emissary. We're just testing everyone's STEM skills. See the light on?
Yeah, it's on.
And you've got it on your Chrome guest?
Yeah, I have it on there, I must be able to make sure it's on. I have it present, so I think we're just gonna get a half of a screen. Good evening, my name is John Newhuzzle, I'm the magnet school coach at Westside Middle School Academy here in Derry. And we, first off, I want to thank you for inviting our school to come out and present about the Invention Convention, which is something that's very important to our, not only our school, but particularly our STEM Academy. It's where we start to really develop kids into future STEM, STEM students and future scientists, excuse me. So, real quick, what is the Invention Convention? Some of you may know, some of you may not. The Invention Convention is a national competition for grades eight through eights. And last year, our school sent, we did send one student on to from the state event to the national event, and hope to do the same thing this year. It's an opportunity for students to improve upon or expand upon an existing invention, or come up with a new invention that solves some sort of problem. And it's really working on those critical thinking skills, those 21st century skills that we are so, working so hard to improve in today's society, and in our school district particularly here. And not only do students self-select, which is, I think, important to note, that they get to choose their own topics of interest, they also work on other skills as well, communication skills in particular, if they have to keep a written journal, they have to present orally, give a sales pitch to a set of judges. And then, you know, they get to, then they also have to build a prototype, the prototype does not have to work, but you get into some of the math and engineering skills of kind of just head modeling development, which are so crucial as well for the kids. And then, you know, again, the competition just really promotes STEM education, something that's been dire need, I think if you read a lot of articles around the country, the industry, what they're looking for, STEM is definitely something most, being sought after. Why it's that important to us, again, it promotes our STEM philosophy. Ever since I was just a STEM coach with five years ago, it's really, I've seen a nice role in the project, and in the products that we're producing. And it really gives us that philosophy that Dr. Labonka and I share to bring our school life with regards to, it's all about creativity in a different way, not maybe always in the artistic way, but to start thinking critically about things that are of interest to you, that are of importance. And so the Invention Convention is a nice stepping stone for that, that allows kids that opportunity, you know, in this day and age, a lot of people are so used to being told exactly what to do, and this is one of those scenarios where it's very difficult to choose themselves what to do. And again, it develops those 21st century skills, problem solving, communication, things that I, we all know, all of us could use skills and working on, so if we can start getting that, that foundation now, it's very, it's important. It also applies to content areas, we apply content areas from across the curriculum, you know, using language skills, math skills, science skills. And then, more importantly, going with what we believe in here in Danbury, it celebrates the student's success through our student expo every year. Kids are brought in, judges are brought in from the outside, parents are brought in, this whole school views it. And, and so kids, not only the kids that are here tonight that are gonna move on to our state event, excuse me, and hopefully maybe on to a national event, but all the kids that participate in it. And then it also supports our community as well through donations from businesses for our intake of our debt. We've built really nice relationships, for example, with Sabers here in Danbury, they frequently give us donations, and we are partnering with them for another upcoming project for fundraiser for our school. So it's a nice, it's a nice development, development for them, and for us, excuse me. And then, so in closing though, I just, we have ten kids that are moving on to our state event, which will be held at the end of April, last week in April, and it's held at UConn, and we have a few of them here tonight, and I'm gonna ask them to stand in just a moment. And if you look around the room, you can see, this is, this is just some of the work that they did to get here. And this is a lot of work for them, they start on it in the beginning of the year, and we spend a few months doing it, and that's where it's a lot different as well, the curriculum where we're constantly moving forward at a really rapid pace. This really takes everyone, working teachers and myself, we have to take a step back and constantly reassess, that's why it fits so nicely in for STEM, STEM program where we always are talking about like the iterative process. So with that said, I would like to have those students stand please, that are from Westside, that are moving on, if you don't mind. There are a few nervous students here, and I think they were...
Just shake all board members hands. Don't be afraid.
And while we're doing that, I'm gonna...
Congratulations, great job.
Are there parents out in the audience? Proud parents, how about standing up?
Mr. Darrow is here.
coordination with the projects, and he also runs our National Junior Honor Society, which they play a pivotal role when it comes to the logistical setup of the art expo, which usually requires, you know, a couple hours the night before, and so Curtis helps me out quite a bit with getting students to help me, and I really appreciate it. So we wanna thank, I'm just gonna... We wanna thank you for letting us come out tonight and recognizing our students' hard work. If it's okay, I would ask that, can I just leave these here for a couple days, I'll come back, that way everyone can have an opportunity to examine them. And if you have any questions, please feel free to email or ask, and thank you again.
When is the UConn?
April 29th, I have to double check, I can send you the exact date, I just, I need to... I want to double check before I say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, public participation, as well as Chen.
Good evening, Han.
You come, you come right up to the table, right there and talk into that microphone if you would, sorry.
Good evening, everybody, and I would like to take the opportunity to thank, to thank everybody and every single one for the job that you guys do, and it's very important to understand, and we do realize how much work you guys put in, what a meaning that you have to go through to get the schools going, and we recognize that, and thank you very much for your service, all of you, thank you. And we're here tonight to support the budget, a new budget that's gonna be proposed, and I think we all need to support that budget, we can have one penny to be reviews or checking out. However, I think the budget is not far enough, we're not investing in our schools, I think we need to take a hard look in how to invest in our schools. I just went online, and every high, and eleven schools are rated number, I think, 119, District of Connecticut, and, and rating star is one, when all the surrounding towns are four, Bethel, Brookfield, Neophelip, Pembry, it's so low, and I think we all need to come together and see what can be done in order to rescue our schools. I think we need to educate our citizens, we need to educate our parents, and I need, I think someone needs to take the lead, and tonight I would like to encourage all of you to take the lead and educate us and take the school to the next level. I think if we don't invest in our schools, we pretty much are just not doing anything for our future, our generation, and I think if we make, if we ask the question to any parent, that do, if we put this way, that our schools are not doing great, should we rescue, or we should let sink? I think every parent's gonna say, I mean, we should do whatever it takes in order to rescue our schools. And same thing, if we ask the same question to builders, owners, to builders, to CEOs, employees, parents, non-parents, they all agree that we need to do whatever it takes in order to save our schools, I think we need to do it, because if we just sit down and wait for Washington, just do a policy that is gonna benefit us, I think it will take forever, but I think we need to do that, and I just want to strongly support this new budget that's gonna be proposed, and I think we should all propose, and we should not let Deser Council and Mayor just take one penny out of this school budget, we should be investing in our teachers, we have teachers taking second jobs in order to make ends meet, so how they gonna be interested in teaching our kids if they cannot make their ends meet? We need to strongly give them a raise, strongly support new school, school rooms, classroom classrooms, and to empower our kids wherever they need to go. So I think we, there's a, I think I'd like to be, I would say, with our budget, but I think we should also support our budget, so I think I have to say, thank you very much.
That's the only person on the sign up sheet, is there anybody else who wanted to participate that was not on the sheet? Anybody who wants to participate? Apple Kevi.
Good night.
Good night, thank you so much. All right, consent calendar.
But the Board of Education approves the items on consent calendar, exhibit nineteen dash thirty-one, through nineteen dash thirty-three as recommended.
Seconded by Mr. Petra Pisa, any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stane, Ocean Carries. All right, Stane, we do have student representatives, good to see you guys, all right.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here speaking with ACE, I am Samara Susan. And so, first, I'll start by saying that five students graduated at the end of semester one from ACE, and we're excited to be celebrated in June with the rest of the 2019 regiments. As we begin semester two, ACE welcomes eighteen new students to the ACE family. We are continuing to run our Thursday enrichment and intervention groups for ACE students during our career and life skills course. There were all of Mollygold and six students, including myself, participating, participated in the start workshop, which all ACE students collaborate with other alternative program students from around the state of Connecticut. The ACE staff and students have continued to wear to mobility, restorative practices to help restore relationships, aid in students' success, increase engagement, and decrease attendance issues. ACE has begun offering after-school clubs such as the Design and Create Club with EJ and Menace, the Art Club with Melissa Lassiti, the Music Club with Kai Jacola, and the ACE Healthy Fitness Club with Daniela Sposito, Laura Wave, and Anthony Hellman. As the warmer weather approaches, ACE staff will be penalizing plans for outdoor adventure trips, such as whitewater rafting, poetry hikes, and a fourteen mile hike on the, on the trail in, you know, Massachusetts. ACE parent, ACE parent, students, and staff would like to thank you all for continued support that our program receives. And I wanna finish by saying, oh, sorry, may America be always above everything and God always above everyone, thank you.
Hello, we're the students from Danbury High School, I'm Gabby Disfilio.
I'm Leisha Nagashet. So as far as clubs go, our school fair and open house for the eighth graders will take place on Monday, March 11th, from six to nine PM, and it will feature tables representing clubs, sports teams, and specific academic courses, and it will be a great way for students and parents to experience most of what's going on at Danbury High School. Danbury's chapter of the International Music Honor Society held a coffeehouse in combination with one of the school's new classes, Modern Rock Band. It was open to the public for night singing, instruments, and poetry. This past Valentine's Day, a key club celebrated by selling carnations, raising over $600 to the Thirst Project, the only nationally youth-run project to address clean water sources worldwide. As for sports, our wrestling team took first in the SEF Championship, as well as Open. There are seven kids from the team that will also compete in New England's. The boys' basketball team won the SEF semifinals against Wilton at Wilton with a score of sixty-eight to forty-eight, and will play the championship game against Ridgefield tomorrow at seven in Wilton. Our varsity and JV cheerleaders finished both their seasons undefeated at the New England Cheerleading Association, and the boys' swim team had an outstanding win over the Crosby Waterbury Career Academy, finishing with a score of one hundred and one to sixty-eight and multiple first-place finishes. Improvements to the passing and graduation rates at DHS have officially removed it from its place on the list of focus schools due to the students' ability to embrace change and strive for the best. Flex is being used for club meetings, play rehearsals, making up tests or quizzes, and homework help. Administration successfully opened Flex schedule to students, and thirty percent of Flex classes are now scheduled by the students, which is a lot easier for us. A few things that are coming up, Danbury High School's musical production of God's Veil will take place in just over a month, on April fourth, fifth, and sixth. It will begin with a student matinee for other Danbury schools on Thursday, and there will be three nighttime shows as well as a matinee on Saturday. Rehearsals are well underway for the acting class production of the Laramie Project, that will take place my second, third, and fourth, second, third, fourth, sorry, in partnership with the school's ACE Create Alliance Club. It will take place in the school's brand-new Black Box Theater. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to action items.
The Board of Education has set the January 2019 Operating Results Analysis General Fund Rents Projects according to it nineteen dash thirty-four.
Second.
Second?
Second, and by Mr. Petra Pisa.
Not your second?
Nope. Does anybody have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stane, Ocean Carries. We are onto the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody, I'd like to start with the AIS magnet school application update. The staff down there, under Chris Roche, went out really an unbelievable job of information nights with the community, surrounding communities, and we have, we have to do the case about eight hundred applicants, which is the most likely, here we go, heading for applications, so we'll be going through that. This testimony has worked hard for today, but it appears...
Some good numbers out of our contact group, so that was like Brookfield, we saw good numbers out of all that area, also if you're non-contact, you're not participating towns like Bethel, we have very high numbers there as well, not Grand Penn, which actually accepts, we're all done, but definitely good numbers on the out-of-town, which is...
Can you hear me back? That's too loud. You wanna do it again, Joe? But at any rate, for the board's information, then our reverse will be at a higher level.
Correct.
In fact, they reversed.
Correct. Well, if they cut that in budget, I would say.
So what do we predict the room to be, Joe?
Right now, we'll know until we get the final accepted numbers, right now, I believe, not a hard number for me, I think we're three seventy-seven in the building right now, I'm hoping we get closer to four hundred, four or five, so we're, can keep the next sixty, forty balance in there, so we continue to up the out-of-town numbers, we up the Danbury numbers, all be bright in the world. So, yeah, good news on the application.
That's good news.
We'll call back to the board once the final dates, if they're actually the official like cutoff data, some letters, or Dan folks are gonna notify us.
Yeah, and Debbie in Kevin's office is your main job, you know, just sort of board's information, we no longer do lottery here at Mon campus, it's given to an outside agency, they run the lottery and rank everything and then send it over to us, then it's a process of going and screening and inviting, and that's what we're doing now, so that's what we're working through right now, she does a great job. Anything else on that, Chris and the staff, you can... One of the things for years we've talked about, and we've talked about this with the teachers' union, there's, you know, there's a lot of stress in the job, all of us have stress in our job, but people go through tough times, and we have been wanting an employee assistant program, maybe you could talk a little bit about it, and we've been able to roll out this year, which is helpful.
Right, so as Dr. Soss said, we've seen a tremendous need over time for access to a plan like this one, and there's lots of things about this plan that are particularly important for the district, from sort of the internal workings of the district managerial side, this is a program which has an eight hundred number that administrators and people or supervisors can use, I can use as a resource to just get some help from certified social workers, if we have, we're working with a faculty member or an employee that needs some kind of assistance, so it's a resource for those of us that work with other employees, as well as a resource for employees and immediate family members themselves. It's not tied to participation in our healthcare plan, so anyone who is an employee in Danbury Public Schools can access this plan, you qualify the eight hundred number, and you can get a wide range of information about a lot of different things, you might have an issue that you would like to talk to somebody about up to three times before transitioning to your own healthcare plan for further services, there's also access to information about legal services, financial planners, pet care, adult care, daycare, so it's a really broad program that just is designed to give people information. In addition to that, there's a whole range of webinars and presentations that we'll access for professional development purposes, but also that our employees can access for themselves. The theory being a well view is a healthy and productive view, and this is a way to provide people enough more access to something else that's beneficial to them. So we met actually today for additional strategies on rolling out the plan, we started out on February first, we did sort of a quick alert to people in, with events of the recent last few weeks, so we got the information about the plan out to our supervisors and administrators, so they could push that for people who were struggling with our recent crisis, so it was available to them, and now we're doing flyers, mailers, magnets, and some presentations to administrators so that they know what the resource looks like. It's a very cost-effective program for us, and I think it's gonna really just provide some tremendous benefits for people who work with us. So I'm really excited about it, I've been asking for it a long time, and I think it's really gonna make a difference, so we're excited.
I just as, I'm gonna add in on that too, my company's had it for, I think, about fourteen years, and it rolled out slow, but genuinely, I've had a lot of people come back and say that it's been hugely useful, and people should just feel comfortable in using it, it's really worked well at my company, so I was really glad to see that came off.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Kim alluded to the mental health, the timing was perfect, and you know, incidentally, we had two weeks, a lot of our high school students, we met, we've been talking about how to support individuals, again, up at high school and extended, if you can get anything. We've been talking about how we can support the high school students and parents and community in general, and what we impact the dancing, that happened two weeks ago. We've met with a community group, and I'm gonna have Kelly or Ann talk a little bit about what we have planned for a March seventh community night. I'll give you this honeywell, by the way, we just put out tonight.
So next Thursday evening at the Black Box Theater at Danbury High School, we're going to have a community forum, and it will be an information session for community members, particularly targeting parents of our students currently in our district. And what it will focus on is topics in mental health, how to seek out referral sources if you need, so how to deal with recent trauma that people have been through either in the community or in their personal lives, and with a couple keynote speakers that are coming from a variety of different agencies. a variety of different agencies. One department that we're looking to speak is the Department of Mental Health and Rehabilitation Services, and that is an agency which can help people that are going through challenging or difficult times. We also have our representative from Suicide Prevention Association, and what we will be doing is really a couple of things. An information session, a time for question and answers, and then really at the end, a link-up if we need any additional support or assistance. If you have an individual posture, there'll be experts in the field available to kind of answer those questions for you. For parents, we'll be providing childcare, so you know, if you need to bring your child, there'll be high school students supervised by staff to facilitate activities during that time for those students. Ann, did you want to add anything?
No, and you're good. Cover it all.
Just through the chairs, a quick question. Did we engage anybody from Danbury Hospital as well for that?
For this particular, no, but we have reached out to several agencies that we were originally on a phone call inclusive, or I'm sorry, not with Danbury Hospital, but with agencies that are also in collaboration with healthcare, but we didn't do this directly through Danbury Hospital.
Just something to think about, maybe someone from the pediatric psychiatric department should just be engaged.
Danbury doesn't have a pediatric psychiatric department, so they don't, so that is why we reached out to other experts in the field who have pediatric knowledge in this area.
Terry, what's Terry's last name?
Budlum.
Budlum. She sat down with us, and unfortunately, there's a body of knowledge around the incident, and we went through the best practices in terms of how we can approach this in a meaningful way. This will be the first step, and there'll be a second and third step as well. So, that's the first act that we'll be working on. She was very helpful to us in planning the evening, so.
The other thing just to add, Dr. Soss, is that we're also going to be doing a series, and thank you, Mr. Wallston, for reminding me, a series of events ongoing. We have not developed the exact dates, but just on doing follow-up topics to this in collaboration with the Department of Health Services of Lisa Morrissey. So, we are going to be able to do ongoing many topics and forums to help.
So, again, March 7th, 6:00 to 7:30, Danbury High School Black Box Theater. Okay? Next, you're going to hear more about this when we talk next week, but a real shout-out has to go to the teachers and the administrators in the buildings. You know, we go through the state assessments, and one of the things that we worked with the state a few years ago was a cutoff score alone doesn't really talk about the work that teachers are doing. And we've got them to expand into other areas that impacts them learning. It's called New Accountability Index, and it looks at a multifaceted number of things, along with assessment of exams. It looks at growth, particularly. It looks at attendance. It looks at a number of different characteristics to make a judgment on how a school is performing. All of our schools did relatively well, but the share, at this point, we had seven schools of distinction, which is really phenomenal, let me think about it. A few years ago, we had five, and out of the seven, I believe, three in the top 10% for growth, and it's only because of the hard work that the teachers are doing. I did hear the resource mentioning about the budget, and I will say to the board, the most ethical thing you're going to confirm as a board member is to approach you and ask you why you're doing this well and getting these results. It goes to the hard work of the teachers, quite frankly. The focus work of the administrators, using data in a meaningful way. But there are things we should be doing that we're not doing, that we can even enhance it more and bring more of our students to proficient. We're not capable or able to do it, because we don't have those resources to do. The Alliance money is not where ECS is putting it now. It's tremendous, at 10.4 million if we get it next year, thereabouts, we'll talk about that. But a lot of the money in there goes to this. So, next week, we'll talk more about specifics, but I just want to give a shout-out to those teachers, administrators for the outstanding work that they did. You heard one of the high school students mention a focused monitoring. That was very difficult for Danbury High School, an unfocused monitoring. It's the achievement on certain tests, it's also the graduation rate, and it's the largest school in the state, and to bring arms around that and to do meaningful purposeful work is very difficult. The staff up there, the administration, through the in-home efforts, did achieve that status, so they're off their focus. Observing, that's a tremendous accomplishment. So, again, we'll talk more about it in our Accountability Index when we talk about more specifics. Which is, by the way, the board workshop on goals. Goal one at the board, Seth Mike Michael Coe talks about achievement, and that'll be at March 6th here. At 6 o'clock, we'll be mailing the materials to you for that night, but we'll be talking about the growth and some of the assessments that we have. There's also, I'm going to ask permission by the board if it's acceptable, to have a vision of mission workshop on April 3rd. Yep, that's what you elect them, have that done?
Yeah, you have that in there, isn't it?
Yeah, because we have a program. Just put it down so it gets in front of you. We need that, clearly, Waterbury, we need input from the board, and to bring, call us, to go through and sort of all of the separate groups coming before you and going through our mission. I remember part of the work there, what we were looking at, the portrait of a graduate, and that'll be a panel that's that we're looking at. Before I leave this, I'm going to ask, did I leave anything else off, Joe? Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, discussion, Governor Lamont's state budget proposal. Ryan Bingham, government affairs associate lobbyist, will attend the March 13th board meeting.
Try to get it tonight, but it didn't work. March 13th, I'm sorry, that we had a March 13th. Let's just take a minute to do this. We've been getting daily updates. Last year, we had a kind of sharp course of battle in terms of how the municipality is going to participate in balancing the state budget. This year, there's much more serious proposals that are going about, and we're trying to work through all of those budgets. Senate Bill 874 is the bill that primarily talks about the governor's budget. The global issue is that 2020 is a $1.5 billion deficit. The following year, 2022, we're told, there'll be a $2.2 billion deficit. So, the governor's budget looks at a number of initiatives that are trying to mitigate that budget deficit. And I say that because I think something needs to be done, and if something will be done, it's probably, and we need to be knowledgeable about those items. One thing you're hearing a lot about is this whole idea about consolidation. Just got a whole proposal from Katie Roy today, who published information on consolidation, the expenses and the savings in consolidation. What I've been able to learn so far is the consolidation of services. And there's some conversation about small districts, and there's been a lot of passion around this, and you'll probably hear more and more of it, but, and there's also legislation in there, talking about our district, working with surrounding districts to put together services, particularly in special ed and budgeting. We have been, luckily, the last two or three years, working with a patchery of our area that are already doing, for us, we're doing some bidding together, we're doing shared transportation, but they're looking for ways to consolidate, particularly in the small areas. I don't really see the impact for us, although you never know, but a lot of it is about services. There's, and they're also looking for, you know, we're talking about unfunded mandate, but they're asking for in a governor's budget, something to include about social emotional learning. You know, the worst stuff that we're doing is around mental health, and there's a lot around emotional learning and trauma-informed instruction. What does that mean? We're going to learn more about it. And there's a task force that's going to be set up, and there's going to be police service and service PD work that we're going to have to be involved with. The thing that will impact us a lot is the teachers' retirement. Last year, you remember, we went back and forth, and they were going to pass through a fee to the local city and municipalities regarding their contribution to TRB. No matter where you come down on this thing, the state is not set up to the contribution. It is what it is, and they're moving through, making requirements, and we'll have to be speaking to it, but they're looking over a two-year period to gather about 7% of the local contribution that you make as a local board municipality to the state. So, for our case, we figure the first year, 7% of 25%, somewhere under, just under $500,000 on the credit. The second year of that, somewhere in the vicinity of $1 million, if it comes to fruition. What was really interesting that we did not, we did not realize, and we keep, as I said, keep combing through this, we thought we were a municipality that's called a, we are distressed, but we're not. We're not one of those. The reason why we're not on the list, and we did speak to some folks today, is that distress is not defined by the school system, it's defined by the municipality. And there might be 10 criterias on there that they look at, housing stock, bond ratings, so they really look at all of that, and Danbury doesn't make that list, even though we're in the priority district, even though we're a alliance district, even though we get that money, which means we're responsible if this comes to fruition of that 25% I told you that we thought would be sunsetted at 5% as these other distressed communities would have. So, we'll be looking at just what that means for us. They're also qualifying students now on the SNAP program. Everything on ECS has been through the plans of free reduced lunch accounts, they're going to redefine it. We think it's the advantage on qualifying students that receive full sex. So, a quick look at this, they started looking at this last year, walked away from it, but the numbers now, Joe, look pretty favorable.
Yeah, we're getting additional feeds in from Medicaid, Medicare, Husky, so we're seeing increased numbers of directly certified. As I explained to the board, lots of additional programs, we come to the lunch program, we'll have that data in April, we get that certified by the state on that data, but those are going to be warming up, just additional software fees, we'll pull and identify those days better.
So, you might ask, you know, how does it save money in a way? Those districts that have free reduced lunch accounts but do not have SNAP program, that money stays in that one. So, they predict to be $4 or $5 million to be distributed in another form, and so they're, you know, the total, there in the abstract reading, but that's an area that we're trying to, you know, deal with this $1.5 million bidding. The other thing that we want to advocate for, and you get a chance, is that, and we confirmed this this morning, Seth and Katie Roy, that they're going to stay true to the implementation of ECS grant calculation, not walk away from that, they're committed to that. And we think that by doing that, at least as a calculus as to how money's going to be allocated, in our case, to Danbury, and not just a block grant, that money is decided at the end of a process of what they can distribute. Kay, you said, what do we figure, next nine years on a roll-off?
Yeah, it's about each year winds up a million and a half to take when you look at the way it rolls out, so.
And what?
Increase, so you guys increase each year ECS, if you look at the governor's right now, we went, went about just about 2.4 million this year, we'll be about 2.4 next year. There's a steady, steady roll-up, that's what that becomes of now in the form of, the trick is, we'll put TRB slides into that, and if you look at, I kind of look at it on the net, so it's a $1.9 million increase, if you assume, some of us paid for the TRB, or the board, and say that's something we have talked about through them. So, you got that, and following, you've got another million, so the second year really drops like 1.4 million, so they're kind of, you know, working inside the same structure between, I would call it, pension contribution and addition.
And I was, I know you're talking about it, I just had a quick, so if we have to pay 25%, we're not going to make the distress plus, and we have paid, do we have any idea of approximate cost of that?
That's, it's, it's your total balance of 25%.
No, it's what it is, it's 25% of your salary.
Your salary, your total salary.
Oh, okay. Seven percent of that.
Seven percent, plus the 25%.
Of the 25%.
Okay.
And they're going to do it over two years, so it's 2.5% first year that it costs.
Correct.
Right? And then the following year, we're going to be responsible for the 7%. Well, the city's going to be responsible, 7%.
Tom, okay. All right. Thank you. Yes?
Just some interesting points they made that sound, that fact that we did not make the distress list, and the duality of this whole debate about the budget, especially with, you know, the parent that we kind of enjoyed today appearing here at Kate's for the budget. This is the situation we're in, and us not making that distress list is what makes the case that Danbury has two stories to tell, one of progress, of growth, of having hearing of things happening, low unemployment rate. We know there's people in the community who are struggling, but the fact of matter is we're actually doing better than most other cities in the state of Connecticut, if not doing much, much better than them. And then at the same time, we have a different reality when it comes to what's happening in our schools. So, the disconnect is that all of us here at the board, we're very committed to doing the best for our kids, because we understand the connections to the future of our city. A lot of people who may oppose the budget, they're thinking about their properties, they may not have children in the school system, so they are thinking, I want my dollars to go towards this, I want my dollars to go towards roads, I want my dollars to go towards the light that's not working on my street, and that's where the debate happens. So, I think that what we have to do collectively as a community is also try to figure out, how do we sell our idea to people who don't have a stake in the game, who don't have a child in the school district, who's not an educator in our community? How do we get them to understand that if we elevate our schools, that we're going to elevate the property values as well, so that it's not so much us versus them, and we can begin to have the fact that we don't make that distress list not be a bummer for the school because we don't have access to more resources, but we're going to be able to be in a Danbury where we're proud that we did make the distress list and we're supporting our schools financially in the same breath.
So, let me just, thank you. The American General Statute defines distressed municipality should be based on high unemployment and poverty, aging housing stock, and it said between 1939 and 2015 is the way they touched that. Low or declining rate of growth and job creation, population and per capita income, additionally looking at the level of per capita income, looking at percentage of population with a high school degree and higher, per capita adjusted and equalized net rent lists. All of that is looked into by general statute, don't need to make a determination. So, they published a list for two years, and they're going to make it here. I'll pass just around this list, just so you get a sense of who's on there.
Get an eye on it.
We're not on it. So, here's the thing, on Friday, March 22nd, the governor's going to be here, if you have time. I'll pass just around, and we'll be here, and it's going to be, it'll be at 7:30 a.m. The chamber's putting this on, legislative breakfast. So, I'll pass it around.
Ethan Allen.
Ethan Allen Hotel, at 7:30. Program starts at 8:00. And we are a member, so it's worth it. Joe, anything to add to that?
No, I mean, like, do I, no, was this sense that the capital access cost and the capital adult that the government put in, obviously, that's, those are two areas of concern, particularly special education costs, and I think obviously, with our budget, a big chunk of that growth is in those cost areas, so I think that's concerning, not alone, not of the school districts, but, you know, the same line. That's the only piece.
Yeah, they sunsetted a number of those items. They're also looking to put together, you know, they're also, we're on a joint study group, I met with Danbury foundations, to the state. I met with Ali Castello, our pre-service preschool administrator, works with Net Connections or with Ed Advance, and we have a lot more requests for seats than seats, it's growing exponentially, so it would be interesting if they're able to fund that, because it's really, we really have a number of students that are not having as good an experience as they should have before they have their kid around them. So, that's also a part of this for this year. Any else?
Stay tuned. Yeah. Thank you. Any information? Forum on mental health, March 7th at 6 o'clock at the Danbury High School Black Box, Community Budget Forum on March 20th, I think it's a flyer over there on the back. Yeah, it's this one. a flyer over there. Yeah, it's this one. 6 o'clock at Rogers Park Middle School and Early Childhood Summer Learning Fair, April 6th, 10 to 1 at the Danbury Sports Home. Can I ask a question? You sure, Ken?
I'm just wondering about the budget forum. We talked about putting an event on Facebook for that. And I don't know if that's kind of fruition. I haven't seen anything. And I think of your.
There's, Will said Black was going on once. That will be putting out.
The channel's on Facebook.
Robin, but I'm not going to add that. It's going out. So the signs in that, hopefully we'll be able to get folks out there. The Educated Heart Budget. Thank you.
But we can ask Robin to create a Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
She can create a.
Facebook. She has a Facebook account.
I'll answer. She was in today. She'll have some of the stuff we talked about.
The March 20th forum is up on Facebook about the Danbury. Not as an event, but we're sure that you have right there.
So would you send her enough to tell her to make an event? I appreciate it.
And just for that reason, because people can, our CD and then also get an alert that they may we help them. The phone saying we have the forum today. So it's too much to warn that, just a sign or flyer, because then it's all their phone out.
Thank you.
Board reports, communications, comments. Anybody have anything to put it in the order?
Yes. We want to report on our committee meeting earlier tonight. The Ad hoc committee met tonight and the first meeting of the Ad hoc committee. And we are going to be looking at a few different things. The professional development report. And that then includes a few different things. Orientation, understanding data and calendar, which we talked about at our workshop back in October. Strengthening our communication with the community, improving, looking at having more self-assessment, we talked about that. The thing that we're going to do at our next committee meeting is going to be on 6 o'clock, if it's okay, on March 13th, is we're going to go over the bylaws.
So it's 6 o'clock on the 13th before the regular scheduled meeting?
Yes. We're going to take you to the goal of the bylaws. And that's where we're going to start. And from there, we're going to set up some of these other things we talked about. Ashley Rachel was our secretary, and she had like two big notes. So we have a lot that we want to address. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else have anything?
Sorry. For the 13th and stuff, the whole board or just Ad hoc?
That's the Ad hoc. And yes, so then the Board Workshop, April 3rd, 6 o'clock. That work for everybody?
Any way that could be scheduled to be before one of our regular board meetings?
We have, we have a board meeting the following week on Wednesday at 10, if that works better. Does anybody have an idea of how long they expect the workshop to be? So if we get it at 6 o'clock on the 10th before the 7 o'clock meeting, that would give it enough time?
It's really what you have an appetite for. So you present in many different times to digest.
There's going to be some questions. I'm going to go out on that and say something.
So, I mean, with a.
We would say you probably should, 90 minutes.
Yeah, we, if it's preferential, they're not making actual trip, we come at 5:30 on the 10th.
It's 5:30.
That work.
This way.
5:30. April 10th, 5:30 instead of the 3rd. So 90 minutes previous to the regular board meeting. Okay. And does anybody else have anything else?
Yeah. Mr. Chair. Many of you are aware of a personal situation that happened to my family last year. Out of that tragedy, we've tried to find some greater purpose. Yes, the answers. Something to put our focus on. And I'm very proud, and my wife is very proud as well. My wife is an employee of, over at Denver High School, she's a secretary. We just finalized the establishment of a scholarship in our son's memory. So we're opening that up to any graduating high school, Denver High School senior, and one graduating senior from Henry Adams Tech, starting off this year, hoping that we'll be able to build a legacy in our son's memory. But even, you know, equally as important, to be able to assist someone, someone who comes from a low-income family, you may just be that little bit of assistance. And it's amazing, the network of support that we bat around. We just literally finalized all this this week. Got it all registered. We got it going. We shared one thing on Facebook, I just saw, and, you know, people just started pouring in and saying, how can I, how can we help? How can we contribute? So that really, you know, the community as a whole, we really do live in a great city. And we have great community members who are just willing to pick us up and say, how can we help? So I'm not letting you all know this for self-gratification, but just that, you know, we look forward to being able to help students in the future, hopefully as opposed to something that can be very beneficial to our students here. But just notifying so that we can have students at Denver High who actually apply for the scholarship and look forward to awarding them for their academic excellence. And again, the qualifications are just someone with comfortable low-income background, but displays community service, displays care for, you know, peers, and just to be able to be helpful and bring some goodness out of the tragedy.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's fine. One more thing?
One quick thing. I have to say, sorry, Sandy. Especially because Mrs. Peters is here. Last night, I attended the All-City Orchestra Concert. It was my daughter's first one, but my third. So it's always a great, great concert. Very much enjoying seeing the whole city come together under one roof. It's pretty cool. Over 40 years of All-City instrumentals. So that's awesome. Thank you so much. And I caught that air joke. I always do.
Thank you.
I'll support you.
She's the one.
That's all for me.
Terrific. Anybody else have anything?
Just a quick comment. And I have a strong voice. I think I need to bite. But last night, I attended a meeting. And I look around in this room at the people that devote so much time to the children of Denver. And I personally want to thank Mr. Wallston, Dr. Ann Lee, and Judith Cochrane. And he came, he did a presentation about the Vision and Mission Study. And me sitting there, listening to him doing the presentation, and his group of people that he had working with him, it was very clear to me, it was a much different understanding as to what I was, what the group is getting ready to do. And I just want to thank him and the leadership for providing the group that came out last night, because they could stay home, to say, I want to hear what the school system is doing. And one thing that one lady said that really stuck with me, and I have been saying this many, many years that I've been on the Board. Sometimes we have to get out of our comfort zone. And one lady stood up and she made a comment about the system, which is the superintendent, the board of it, you don't come to us. And she thanked that Mr. Wallston will come out in the community. And that was at an African-American church that he came and did the presentation. And it was a barrage of people there. So, you know, sometimes we have to get out of our comfort zone to go see what someone else is doing and hear what they're presenting to us.
Anybody else have anything?
I don't know. Someone had to come up with a, ban uniforms.
Yeah, we confirmed today, we spoke to the vendor, they had the banned uniforms. They're all set. The order's good. So whatever the delivery date was, it's set. It's both communicated. They've got their potential in check and made a difference. So it was awesome. There was kind of miscommunication between the Band-Aids and the, what Mr. Adams wants, what old family piece. So we got.
My understanding is they were in the original, right?
Yeah, they were like, oh, like, they're like selling all their.
Armor.
Yeah, they, they, they served us well. Just put it that way. So we're going to put in our reorder date for 2079?
Already.
You just keep the books on. There you go. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, everybody. Anybody else have anything? We'll have to hand motion to adjourn.
The motion to adjourn, I mean.
Second to the drive in from Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, everyone.
I reckon it was 7:45.
All right.